Special visitors from two twenty of the scouts from Middleborough. And so if you guys don't mind, I would invite you up to join us and to lead the pledge of allegiance for us.
Release the flag.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Brian, did you want to introduce?
Well.
Okay. Before we start, I do want to thank you for coming, and I understand that most of you are coming tonight in fulfillment of a badge. But I'd just like to remind you guys that we're your school committee too, and you can be part of this meeting. So there'll be at times when I ask for public comment, and you are more than welcome to participate if you have anything you'd like to add, okay? So feel free, this, you don't have to just sit and watch. It's a participatory meeting, and you're more than welcome to add your two cents. Because, to be honest with you guys, you guys are the consumers of the school. You guys are the ones that go, and so we appreciate your input too. So thank you very much. I will start off with public comment. Does anyone have anything they wish to speak about that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one will move on. Mr. Lynch, we have recognition tonight.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair, members of the committee and members of the audience. I'd like to invite Isabella Ventreska down to the microphone if you could. Isabella, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Isabella is a senior at Middleborough High School. Please have a seat. At Middleborough High School, she's participated in soccer in the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, winter track, ninth, ten, eleven, twelve, tennis, ten, eleven, twelve, and spring track as a freshman. She participates in the band where she plays the flute in all four years. She's been in the student council, she's been on the class board, she's a member-at-large and vice president. She's in the history honor society, the Mu Alpha Theta Society, the National Honor Society, and Silver M. She's been on the math team for two years, she's been in the best buddies program for two years, and she's also participated in several community service programs, including the Jimmy Fund and the special education summer program. She's worked at Fisher's Pub, she's worked for the Middleborough Public Schools, and she works for families in town as a babysitter. She also is somebody who identifies her three most admirable qualities as being respectful, determined, and humbly confident. This evening, I invite Isabella down to come to the microphone because as a superintendent of schools in Middleborough, I'm proud and happy to announce that she is now the recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents' annual certificate of academic excellence for the Middleborough High School. She has truly distinguished herself by her positively and consistently high academic standing while also maintaining a high level of involvement in developing the positive culture at Middleborough High School. This coveted annual award given to one student in each community is given by the superintendent of schools across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and is designed to be awarded to one senior at the beginning of the senior year. I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to Isabella and to her family and invite them down for a quick picture, and I'll hand her the award. Isabella, congratulations. Awesome, it's a great award. Thank you very much. Do you have any comments you'd like to mention? She's being humbly confident. So if the school committee could stand up and come over and take a picture with Isabella, with myself, and... Mr. Brannigan, you want to be in the picture or do you want to take? So congratulations on behalf of myself and the school committee. That's your award. Everybody ready?
Next to Ryan, behind him. Here we go, ready? Three, two, one. Good.
Awesome, one more round of applause for Isabella. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much for coming. Next up on our agenda is discussion items, and first up is Mr. McCarthy. Owen, how are you tonight?
Student council's annual lock-in was held this Saturday into Sunday. Over 150 students kicked off the year with a sleepless night full of workshops, energizers, and large group activities. The freshmen, sophomores, and juniors all took to PSATs yesterday. Seniors went in the auditorium while testing was going on where guidance was available to work on college applications. Next week is the high school's spirit week, the homecoming spirit week. On Monday, we have pajama day. Tuesday is tourist day with the volleyball senior night game at 6:30. Wednesday is class color day as the class of 2023 comes to visit the high school for the first time and are led on tours by Club Us members. Thursday is a pink-out day with the first unified basketball home game at 4:00 p.m., and the charity dinner benefiting the Dana Farmer-Farber Cancer Institute following from 6:00 to 8:00. Friday is Seachem Pride Day, black and orange, with the homecoming parade and the football game against Norwell at 7:00 that night. Saturday is the girls' soccer and varsity field hockey games at 10:00 a.m. on the back lawn of the high school with the boys' soccer and JV field hockey teams playing right after. There will be food and games going on all morning for families to enjoy. And lastly, the unified basketball team had its first game yesterday with a big win over Case High School. Unfortunately, I couldn't go to this one, but I am excited for the remaining four games this season. Great job to all members of the team, especially Josh Janbrook, who led the charge with 16 points. The next game is our first home game Thursday, October 18th at 4:00 p.m. It's after all practices, so athletes can support the team, and I'd like to invite you all to be there for this wonderful event. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Owen? Owen, thanks a lot. I know you did the lock-in, but you also spent the day before decorating for the lock-in. So the lock-in was extra long for you.
Yeah, SATs done morning too.
Fantastic, thank you. Any member of the school committee have anything they wish to mention today? Mr. Jimonan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something a little out of order under the other was a donation. You know, our PTAs in our town are just phenomenal, they're always giving. We had another PTA gift to the Berkland schools for $5,400. Between the PTAs at all of ours and the high school, not a PTA, but that group, they do, these groups do so much, and we should, we really thank them a lot for what they do and the things that they give for science lab supplies, which was really cool. Thank you.
I do want to mention that superintendent, myself, and Mr. Stevens participated this past Sunday in the Hockey Parents Golf Tournament. Had a lot of fun. It saddens me to know when to tell you that Mr. Lynch actually won the tournament. But aside from that, it was a, it was a fun tournament other than that particular piece.
It was a team effort, Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Seeing none, then I'll move on. Superintendent, Mr. Cutino is not here tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience, I'd like to formally introduce Sarah Hickey, our new Director of Business and Finance, who joins me at the table for the first time today. You've seen her, you've heard her speak, you've had a chance to interact with her a little bit, but today is her officially, her first official meeting sitting at the table. So welcome, Sarah. She joins us from the Weymouth Public Schools. She lives in Halifax with her husband and two daughters, one college, one high school, and we welcome Sarah. And she has hit the ground running, and she's getting acclimated to the job and to the office and trying to figure things out, and, you know, she is a licensed business manager in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but each community is different. So she's acclimating herself, and we welcome her. So congratulations and welcome to Sarah. Next on the agenda is homecoming week, and I'd invite Mr. Brannigan down to the microphone to talk a little bit about the activities coming up for a very, very busy homecoming week, which is always capped off with a, with a fun parade and football game. Welcome, Mr. Paul Brannigan.
I know that Owen had shared with you the schedule, and we've made a lot of changes this coming year with our homecoming weekend. We would like to invite all of you to be part of the activities. Working with Ryan Sylvia, the athletic director, we really tried to ensure the fact that no matter what the athletic event is, they would have a home event and a part of that gate.
Sorry. So part of the week is that we had to make some moves, so we also tried to incorporate the other activities in the school. So you'll notice the fact in the schedule when it is released, which we're just finalizing everything, is that the talent show has been moved into the, into homecoming week, so it should be held on Tuesday night of next week. We will be hosting the Unified Sports, our first home event for Unified Basketball, which will be held on Thursday, as Owen had shared, and we very strategically placed that up against the homecoming dinner. So that way there with the crowd that we're hoping will be at the Unified Sports Day, that we would then be able to go into the cafeteria for dinner. The students are doing a pink-out day for breast cancer awareness, and that will be the charity of choice for the dinner, and also it will be the theme day, so the students can kind of turn the gym pink for the, for the athletes. Friday is our parade, which typically, historically, has always been on Saturday, but we moved it to a Friday night with a Friday night football game, which we're really quite excited by. That was done really out of need because we were having a lot of challenge getting the game on the Saturday, but it really became an opportunity to really rethink how we do homecoming, which has really generated a lot of excitement amongst the student body. But really what we're really excited by is the ability to have a Saturday event at the high school. Both our girls' and boys' soccer team will be playing, our field hockey team will be playing, both JV and varsity teams will be playing that Saturday morning. The student council is working on getting kind of a fair kind of environment set up, and they're researching now the potential of a food truck or two or a barbecue of some kind to really generate a community feel as the beginning stages of a really different look to a homecoming. And we have a brand-new group at the high school called Club Us or Club Unified Students, and we took the principal's roundtable and the captain's council that Mr. Sylvia ran and merged those groups together, and it's a program that he and I are running together. And that group represents every president, chair, leader in the school in terms of running certain groups or all groups in the school, including the captains of every athletic team. And they come together to talk about how you unify the student body even more, and, and they were really the ones who really spearheaded some of the additional pieces to a homecoming week, which we're really excited by. All of you will be receiving an invitation quite shortly from the student council to be a judge next Friday night for the homecoming parade. So be watching your emails for that, it will be forthcoming. So we're just, we don't have a time yet because we just need to watch when sundown is so we can strategically place when the parade will kick off. So more to come on that, but we're looking forward to the events next week and especially that Unified game, if you could be at the high school for 4:00 p.m. in the gym. It will be our first home event for Unified Basketball, which we're quite excited by.
Paul, if I could mention one thing, I attended a meeting last night, and one of the things that was brought up was, they asked, since a lot of those kids participate in the Y early in the morning, if we could send a flyer over to the Y, and they would encourage staff to attend the Unified Basketball game, since a lot of staff know those children and see those children each morning. And I thought that would be a great idea, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Great idea, absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Brannigan?
I'm sorry if you already said this, I was just curious, what would we be judging on Friday?
Sure. You would be judging the four floats, so every class has a float, and you would be judging the winners of, or choosing the winner of the best float in the homecoming parade. So it's a big, it's a big deal to be awarded the best float in the homecoming parade. So that will be your charge if you're able to join us, so.
Thanks.
I just want to say to you and Mr. Silva that this is very exciting. I mean, you've sort of planned the whole week differently, this has a new look to it. It really has a big community feel to it, and I think the biggest thing is there are opportunities for the community to go to events essentially each, each day, be it a sporting event or some event after school, and to really be a part of homecoming themselves if they really want to. So that's great.
And Mr. Chair, before Mr. Brannigan goes to his next item on the agenda, I wanted to mention the fact that we had a tremendous wellness week last week at the high school, which was very well received. And also, we have the Choices Yours Assembly coming up next Wednesday for the eighth grade for the move-up day, which is an exciting day. Our eighth graders come up to the high school and are celebrated and invited and welcomed and have tours of the high school, and Mr. Bill Breen organizes that day, and so the school committee is certainly invited to that too. I know you folks are busy too, so. Thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Onto the Middleborough High School Student Activity Account Distribution of Funds, which is a, a letter that is in your package or should be in your package. Mr. Brannigan.
We, based upon information that we had received in regards to just our audit that we had of the student activities accounts, that there was a line item that we were hosting that we really can't be hosting any longer. And when we went back through to see why that scholarship money and what it belonged to, that it says in your letter exactly what we were hosting that for. And the idea is, is to be able to send back to the recipient there that you see the host of the Gross Scholarship for Dr. Richard Gross, to be able to return that. There was, it happened again this year where Morton Hospital sent in a donation, but instead of sending it to the family, they sent it to us, and it needed to kind of be returned to them so they could do it appropriately. And that it happened back in when we had that check deposited into that account. And also the fact we just had scholarships over the years that had never been picked up or the student was no longer eligible, and, and it explains everything in there of how we ended up with that money. So the request is, is to be able to return the $1,000 to Mrs. Gross, and then to the rest of it to be able to transfer into dollars for scholars with your approval.
Transfers as presented.
And this is for discussion, this is part of, there are more limitations now than ever on student activity fees. Student activity fees now become audited on a regular basis, and so this is part of making sure that we're compliant and remember everything about. Does anyone have any other questions about this? Mr. Oakley?
I just wondered if, if you could talk real briefly about that particular scholarship and maybe why, why no one had applied for it or got it?
For, for which one?
Was it the Gross one that you said?
Yeah, so that, absolutely. Mrs. Gross has hosted this or sponsored this scholarship since 2015, and that Morton Hospital has always kindly been a part of the building of the fund to afford to a future student going into medicine. And that each year, there's a student or potentially two that the family selects out of the scholarship application pool that will receive that scholarship, and they do a wonderful ceremony at the town hall in late April, where a family and friends come together, and it's an opportunity to celebrate Dr. Gross, but at the same token, be able to celebrate and pay it forward to a student heading off to college. And that, and when the scholarship was first created, that we had received a donation, I believe from, well, I believe from Morton Hospital, and it was applied to our student activities account into that line item. And then it never made it back to Mrs. Gross, so it's, when we realized it, it's now bringing it back to that account when we researched where that money was, because we knew we had to close up that account. So that check was from the very beginning of the scholarship, when that should have actually gone to the family.
Ah, okay, sorry, if I could ask a follow-up. So it, it's not necessarily that no one applied and didn't get it, it's just that it was money that needs to be moved?
And we realized that it happened because it happened again this year where we had received a donation on behalf of Morton Hospital to this fund, and we weren't able to accept it. So we had to work with the hospital and the family to be able to return the check, to return it, to pay it to the scholarship fund of that family, for that family to be able to use it towards scholarships for students. And when we realized that we were holding this account, that we needed to be able to research where that money was, is when we realized that we had had another one of those checks paid at the very beginning of that scholarship. So now it's just basically returning it to her, so she can add it to their fund to be able to provide it to future students applying for that scholarship, which every year, as I said, since 2015, they've been so kind to give it to a Middleborough student.
That's great, thanks for the explanation.
Other comments? Tearing that, anyone in the public have any comments they wish to make? Seeing none. Motion on the table to, to approve Mr. Brannigan's request for transfers. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to invite two of our principals down to the table, who are going to assist with tonight's orientation of information for the MCAS presentation. MCAS presentation, in its traditional form, was simply a presentation of the data. And what we are attempting to do as a school administrative team is to make that data more meaningful. And by making it more meaningful is, is making sure that we're able to apply information from this data that we received, study the data, and, and apply it to make our schools better, to, for, to improve school, student achievement. So Derek is here and he's Thompson, and Lisa Grimes. Lisa has changed her name over the summer, and she's back to her maiden name, which is Grimes. So we welcome you tonight, I know you're hooking up your computer. And this is a presentation of, you have in your packet some basic information that was provided to you, and in the front of your packet, you have this presentation for this evening. And there's also a couple of extra packets up there, a few extra packets up there for anyone in the, in the audience that wants to look at them. And we're going to talk a little bit about the new next-generation MCAS and the changes that have occurred over the years, over the year, really, the last couple of years, and, and what the data means and what the data should mean to us as we move forward. So without further ado, the question on the board is, what is the next-generation MCAS? And our MCAS started as the, the result of Ed Reform back in 93, and it was a system of accountability that was put in place for the Massachusetts Public Schools, which was never in place before. Prior to that, everyone sort of did their own testing. Different people, different, some, some communities used Iowa, some communities used California, some communities used comprehensive tests of basic skills. There are many norm testings, testing that was used, but we could not compare school to school, town to town, city to city, et cetera. So this was developed as a way, an accountability system in Massachusetts, and it was seen and discovered over the years to be something that was a bit outdated. This new system is called the Next Generation or MCAS 2.0. It focuses on students' critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, and ability to make connections between reading and writing. It gives a clearer signal of readiness for the next grade level of college and career because the scores are normed throughout the grades. Designed to be given on a computer, although paper versions are still available for some communities that are not able to do it. We fortunately are able to do that, and we have done that. First given in spring 2017 in grades three through eight in English, and will eventually replace the older, what's now called the legacy MCAS tests in grade three through 10, which are the 5-8 science and the 10th grade testings. So MCAS achievement levels, in the past, it's been advanced proficient, needs improvement, and warning. Most of us are very familiar with that system. The Next Generation has a new system of achievement level. One first is exceeding expectations, and that is a student who performs at this level has exceeded grade-level expectations by demonstrating mastery of the subject matter, basically almost perfect scores in everything. Meeting expectations, this is a student who's performing at this level met grade-level expectations and is academically on track to succeed in the current grade in this subject. Partially meeting expectations, a student who performed at this level partially met grade-level expectations in the subject, and the school, in consultation with the student's parent guardian, should consider whether the student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in this subject. Not meeting expectations, a student who performed at this level did not meet grade-level expectations in the subject, and the school, in consultation with the student's parent and guardian, should determine the coordinated academic assistance and/or additional instruction the student needs to succeed in the subject. Tomorrow, in a bulk mailing, each parent of any student who was tested in our district will receive a parent report. And this parent will, this parent report contains overall results, content area information, and report to get categories and item level information. The overall results page that you see here is a little bit difficult to see, hopefully you can see it on your paper in front of you. This section shows your child's overall score out of a possible 560 on each Next Generation content area test that he or she took in the spring, that should read 2018. This is directly from the state, so I apologize. This section also tells you which achievement level your child has reached in each content area, which helps to show if your child's on track with grade-level expectations. And additionally, this section also includes information on how you can use these results to work in collaboration with your child's teacher to help them succeed. Next page is content area information. Specific content area information, this section demonstrates in more detail the child's score and achievement level in each content area. It gives information on what the achievement level means. The colored bar shows the score range for each achievement level and where your child's score falls, which indicates how close your child is to the next level, and you'll also see how your student's score compares to the average score in the school, the district, and statewide. Then we have reporting categories and item level information. Each content area has multiple reporting categories, as seen on the left side, hand side. This change shows how many points your student received out of total for each category, as well as the student's average statewide for students who performed similarly. This display also shows how many points your student earned on each question on the test, and the information can be used in conjunction with released items, item descriptions, and other materials to see where your child is succeeding and where he or she may not need additional support, may need additional support to enhance specific content area skills needed to master grade-level standards. And finally, in the science and technology area, this is one of those tests that is the previous generation. If your child was in grades five or eight in spring of 2000, it should read 18. He or she took science and technology, engineering, in addition to ELA and math. STE tests will be transitioned to Next Generation in the spring of 2019, so there is no change in the way they are reported in the spring of 2018. STA results are reported for spring 2018 on the legacy MCAS achievement levels, advanced proficient, needs improvement, and warning. Apologize for the typos on this, but this was taken directly from the Department of Educate, Department of Early, Elementary and Secondary Education, excuse me, website. So as we transition now to the next page, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Andrade talk about accountability and what new accountability means with the Next Generation MCAS. I'm sorry, Mrs. Grimes.
I'm still getting used to it too. So we are receiving very different reports than we've received before. So this is actually a standalone year for us. What you see in front of you is not driven from any of our historical data from our districts or our schools. You will notice that we are reporting on all students and our lowest-performing students. We get scores on achievement, growth for the high school, it's high school completion, and proficiency towards English, English, with English language learners. So you'll see numbers four, four, four across, this is our district, these are our district results. So, of course, it's small print here, 78% are meeting targets. Targets were, in the four means, that in our, we were put, the districts and schools were put into quadrants, and they were decided upon with looking at other districts, not from our data specifically, but from other districts, and how they improved from 2013 through 2016. These targets that were made, which you'll see on the next page, were made by the district. They weren't, like I said, not anything that was developed from our schools. The 67.5% is how it's weighted. So you'll see that achievement is weighed 67.5, a growth is 22.5. We don't get a score, obviously for high school, that's the difference, and we don't have enough student setters scoring with ELL, so therefore we don't get a score for ELL. We do, they count absenteeism now, chronic absenteeism. That's not only students that are taking the, excuse me, taking the test, but students for grades, all grades, one through 12. So in 180, 180 school days, if a student is out 18 days, they're considered chronically absent, and it's affected in, in the reporting of the results, and that's excused and unexcused absences. So you can see the next column with lowest performing, our students are also looked at, it's the bottom 20% of our students, and they're also looked at through the same lens of how are they achieving, what growth are they having? And we also receive points according to where we fall, what quadrant we fall in decides how many points we need to make towards our target, and are we meeting our targets? This explains the quadrants. So this, as you see, are the schools. HBB and MKG both fell in the second quadrant, which means we had to make gains in improvement increments that had to exceed 1.5 in order to meet or exceed our targets. And in math, it was 1.5. So, for instance, if you were in a school that's in quadrant one, you had a different target than if you were in a quadrant two, quadrant three, or quadrant four. And you can see that it changes depending on your group, all students, low performing students. And then at the bottom is high school, because high school, again, took the legacy test. So it's a little bit different and they're also put into quadrants and they needed, they provided what their increments needed to be in order to partially meet, meet, or exceed their targets. Then to make it even more deep, they decided they were going to do the same with districts. So they looked at districts in the same fashion and then decided what was the district then going to have to improve by in order to meet or exceed their targets as well. So what I, excuse me, this is the non-high school report. And we're looking at the, it's actually, this is from high school, ELA, I'm sorry. It's tough for me to see at this angle. And we're looking at, if you notice, the 2017 achievement, 496.1. The 2018 achievement, 499.1. It's a three-point change to 4978 is our new target. Now here's the difference. The target's going to change because what's going to happen now in 2019, this is, because this is a standalone year, this now goes away. Targets now will be recalculated according to the data that we've had in the last two years. So this year cannot be compared to any other year. So for us, as building administrators, we said, okay, these, for us this year, they're numbers on a page. What's important to us is how are we comparing to the state? Because that doesn't change how we compare to the state and how well we're doing, you know, that's, that's the constant. Also, the important piece to this is looking at, how are we comparing to the state at each specific standard? And how do we address those standard, how do we address those standards to close our achievement gaps for all of our students? So, what I did was I provided a sample, this is Mary Kay Good's actual report, so I could take you through an actual school report. So, Mary Kay Good is at this point meeting targets. 76% of our targets are being met at this time. We received, and you can see the point values that we received in with our English language charts, with our math achievement, and with our science achievement. There's our weighted scores of 67.5 across the board. When we look at the lowest performing students, that is 68 children at Mary Kay Good. That, that is those students in that cohort of lowest performing. That's the 20% of the lowest performing students. So we've identified those students. Teachers have received that information specifically on those students. We've also shared that information with our middle schools as well, with the fifth graders that have now moved on to sixth grade. Our growth as well, receiving our growth and our numbers with, again, the one to four numbers, depending on how much you were able to, how many points you were able to gain. We obviously are not high school, so we don't get that piece. We don't have enough students in the cohort for ELL, so we don't get reported there. We didn't receive any, we didn't hit our target for chronically absent. So that is something that we're looking at at Mary Kay Good in order to improve our attendance, so we can hit that for next year. The concern that we have as administrators is looking at this is, these reports could look very different next year with new targets. So, again, numbers on our page are very helpful to us, but, you know, it's, it's a new, it's a new game next year. Again, they're moving, they're changing and moving those targets again. So our focus this year is digging very deep, not only with our district data team, but also with our individual data teams and actually working with both schools together on specific standards. And we're seeing those areas of deficiency. Sorry.
Brian, this is losing our voice here. I did just want to say one thing about this. And I think we did pretty well this year across the district, which is great. But we do look at it with caution, like, like Ms. Grimes said, it's, I have to practice that, Ms. Grimes.
I know, I'm sorry, I have to wear a name tag for a while.
We have to, you know, our targets were just set for us. Typically, it's set based off what we've done in the past, so that's a little bit different. The other thing I wanted to point out about, when you look at this graph, that is really a huge change, is half of our performance on MCAS is rooted in our ability to move our bottom 20%. That's something they've never done before. So, for my building, that's about 56 kids in grade four and five. And half of our accountability is rooted in there. So that's why, you know, we, what I'm going to get into is show you a little bit of what we plan on doing.
Also, the, the growth, they decided 50 was the magic number for growth. That was their decision on the state's level. So, it used to be, on the old reports, it was adequate growth was between 40 and 60. So you had a range. Now it was 50. So that was a change from this year as well, that I wanted to make sure that they.
Yeah, and we're not sure if they're going to keep it that way or not.
Right, we don't know, they haven't told us yet.
Regardless, I think we did fine, but it was a, that was a big change. It's something that has forced us to think a little bit about what we're doing. So as Ms. Grimes mentioned, a good portion of our energies are going to be really focused on our detailed data. So I'm going to show you a little bit of that. This data is new to us, so one of the things I wanted to share is really, our charge tonight was to share with you some data. I'm going to show you where you can find some of this data on DESE's website and maybe help you understand a little bit of what you're looking at. But we still have a lot of work to unpack this and see what it means ourselves. So, one of the things we're really excited about is the addition of Dr. Gates in the position of Director of Curriculum Instruction. I think, for the first time since I've been here, we're taking a uniform approach to analyzing our MCAS data in all of our schools. So we're having data teams in the building, which I think we've all have always had. But we've not had a district team and we've not been strategic in how we analyze the data in the buildings with that information coming back up to the district team so that we can really make some informed decisions about the budget, around our curriculum, what's working, what's not, how we can support each other. So, pretty excited about that piece of it. And this is the kind of data we're going to be looking at when we're starting to have this conversation. So what you see up here is the district report, grades three through eight, and then the bottom is the high school, including grade five science, because it was science and technology. But what you see here is our performance, our percentage of kids in each category, meeting or exceeding, exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, not meeting, compared to the state average. You'll see an average scaled score, so scaled score is new with the new MCAS. We've talked about that in meetings past. I can explain that if you want me to later. Our average growth percentile and the number of students included in each category. So this gives us a district-wide perspective and has some good comparative data in this, for each grade, in each subject area. I, just as a sample, have my school here, because I think one thing I wanted to point out is, when you're looking at these reports, it's really helpful to look at the school reports because we have achievement percentiles, which is that far right category. So, what we get in the achievement percentile column is essentially a cumulative rating, kind of, of where we stack up in the state. So when you're looking across that column and saying, okay, grade three reading, you know, they had 62% meeting or exceeding versus the state was 52, that looks great. I don't know, as I go through all of these categories, where that stands up. When you look over at the achievement percentile, you can see where each grade stacks up in relation to the state. And what you'll see when you look at all the schools really are some achievement percentiles that are to be proud of. You know, 51st percentile, 70th percentile, 69th percentile, fourth grade math. That's just my building, but that is the case in all buildings. So, this is an important report to look at.
The one, and the change also, back in the legacy test, we were only compared to elementary schools. What, now, they've changed that, that we're compared through three through eight. So, middle schools and elementary schools now are, they're all in together. So they kept that separate, not anymore, it's all together.
So we have a lot of work to do to analyze this. We are going to be back here to report out how, what we believe the interpretation of a lot of this data is, what our plans are moving forward. I talked to Mr. Lynch about this, showing you, everybody real quickly, a little bit of a test drive, because this website can be a little overwhelming. If you go to profiles.doe.mass.edu, it will bring you to the.
To your children.
Just, yeah, to my children, they're in the background. It'll bring you to the school and district profile. You'll need to do a little bit of navigating to get to Middleborough. If it comes up as a state, the state, you can click on Plymouth County and Middleborough. You'll get here, eventually, you'll figure it out. There's two tabs I just wanted to draw your attention to, you can get lost here. But the first is accountability, which is essentially what you heard Ms. Grimes presenting today, okay? This is how they work their numbers to determine how they're going to hold everybody accountable. And from here, you can get detailed data in terms of how they calculated those points. And then you can view each school, which is right here, schools in the district. The next tab that we want to draw your attention to, this is one we're going to be spending a lot of time with, is assessment. This is our, our achievement. This is where we're going to find our information in terms of how we did. And so some of the tabs over here on the left, and you have some of these reports. You have student growth report, that's in your binder. You can see how we stacked up in the state, how each school did. We have an annual comparison that's also in your binder. I mean, we can only see 2017 to 2018, but it's still helpful. You can see grade by grade how that looks. And then one of the big ones that, well, a big one for us, is this item by item analysis of the standards. So, we currently, already, I know in my building and in MKG, we have our teachers at the grade levels going through the process of looking at each individual standard, where we were higher than the state average, where we were lower than the state average, identifying trends, looking for weaknesses. This is something we're going to do as an admin team with our district data. The high school's going to do it, the middle school's going to do it. And this is really going to inform our next step. So we're pretty excited about that. So, that's about it that I had for tonight. I just thought, you know, a lot of this information is available to people in the public and they don't always know where to go to get this information. And definitely, if you're interested, we encourage people to log on and check some of this stuff out.
If I may, just a quick question. When looking at this piece, one of the things is, and correct me if I'm wrong, when it lists district, it's percentage. So percentage of kids that meet or exceeded expectations.
Correct.
And I would draw everyone's attention, because I think this is an important thing, and Paul knows I ask this question all the time. It's the 10th grade tests that are the tests that, I don't want to say are meaningful, but mean something to that student. Because that student will not graduate if they do not meet the MCAS. And so, for example, in grade 10, English language, it was 2% received warning or fail. And given the number of students that took the test, that's three students. So I think it's important to note that when you look at those percentages, those percentages drop drastically when we hit the 10th grade. And we, we talk about tests that a child is graduating or not. And if I'm correct, has been the case the past several years, those students get the opportunity to take the test again and again in order to graduate. And in most cases, students who are not, who are graduate, those students are still graduating because they meet the requirements of the test at the end. The other thing I want to mention to the students, to the school community too, because I think it's really important on the other end, is for those who attend award ceremony, there are a considerable number of students who get the Adams Award. And I believe the last two years, it's been close to 100, give or take, per grade. Those kids have exceeded expectations and are getting their tuition waived at state schools because they've been outstanding on these exams. And I think that, that's a relatively high number, given our school district. When you talk about 178 kids taking that exam and us continually graduating 178, when you see those award ceremonies, when that number's that high, I will tell you as a parent, that that doesn't really mean a lot. Because unfortunately, the tuition portion of the program is about 600 bucks a semester and everything else is a fee. Yeah, and so you're, it drives you a little crazy. But, you know, it is important to point out, because we spend a lot of time going through this. And in my mind, it really boils down to 10th grade, because 10th grade's where they, you know, decision to graduate. And year after year after year, and I recognize these are standalones, we are constantly having small numbers of students not pass. And then when given those opportunities to work at it, sort of get it done. And I think that's really, really important.
I think it's a great point. And if you look at the high school's data from this year, they absolutely rocked it. They, they really did a nice job. And I think, you know, one of the things I've talked to Mr. Lynch about is, when you go back and look at our data going all the way back to 2013 is where I like to start, because that was the first year that I was responsible for MCAS. Our whole district, every school's moved forward continually, year after year after year. And you're right, I think 10th grade is when it matters. The kids need to be able to pass it. It matters in every grade, but.
You know, and I don't mean that, I just meant, there's a realization for a lot of people that, you know, this is the point in which, you know, we've heard in the past, there are some kids who just, you know, are tired of the length of testing and sort of zone out at the end. And also, you have situations where, you know, in the, in the 10th grade, all of a sudden, it means something. And I know, I've seen lots of kids get nervous, you know, before MCAS in the 10th grades and sort of have that freak out moment and they, you know, want to work. And I think we try and try to make their life easier and try to do things. But I do want to point that out, you know, time and time again, you look at bits and pieces of it. But in my mind, it's the 10th grade's where it really counts. And the, the numbers are very, very small. And when you take those percentages and look at them as actual children, then we're talking, you know, in a worst-case scenario, I think we're talking six kids. So, yes.
I, I look at the data, I'm an engineer, everything's driven by data. And the concern that I always run into with people when they start talking, they start looking at other schools or other options that they have. And I always say to them, yeah, you're, you're looking at apples and oranges sometimes. Sometimes, or, some of the issues that we run into is that a small group of students could affect a huge swing in a, in a score, if you want to call it that. And then that's what gets reported to the news. They don't look at what we're doing as, as a district. They don't look at that, you know, that, that improvement that's going on. You know, you, you know, five years, your students are in the high school right now. What you did five years ago is in there. So I see that. And, but I always, I always have people say, well, you know, I looked at such and such school, I got this postcard. And I said, yeah, and they throw kids out when they, I've seen it firsthand, students getting exited from other schools and they come back to our district. And then we take that student, we nurture that student, because we take every student. And I say to parents, when you look at the real data, look at the data, we're doing some incredible stuff here. I was looking at it and that, that, the absentee piece, it's a tough one. It's a tough one and not even being there for the test is a tough one. But it's something that I know we've worked at in the past. I don't know if that's really affecting us that much, is it really affecting? I mean, four points for not, you know, is it not really that big a deal? Or, it's a big deal, but as compared to the other pieces?
Those points can matter, because it can move a school from partially meeting to meeting. So, yeah, it, it could affect it. And it, and it affects, it's the first time they're looking at grades one through 12. Grades one through 12, so even the grades that are not testing grades have some now responsibility to the test, you know? Which, for me, is, is a good thing. It's making everybody a little bit more accountable to, to the, to the results, not just those, as we call them, MCAS years. But, you know, we, we try to encourage our kids to be in school. And it's about the learning opportunities that are missed when kids are not in school. I know kids get sick and I know there's a push with the state, because it's excused and unexcused, which I know there is a push to have that conversation about. Because when kids are sick, we don't want them to come to school, you know, we don't, we do have issues with that. So, how does that move forward in the future because of those reasons? But it's missed, and I had, we had a chance on a webinar that they did discuss that, that it, it's just basically looking at missed learning opportunities for these, for these kiddos.
We also are talking as a district, as part of this data team, in, in looking at how we are marking absenteeism. For example, we, we, sometimes we mark somebody as absent, excused. Uh, for example, we, we, sometimes we mark somebody as absent excuse if they're going on a field trip. If they come to school and they're dismissed from school and they come back to school, technically they are present. They're just presently elsewhere. Um, but, so we're taking a serious look at sort of codifying and, and how we're doing this and making sure with the state that we're doing it properly and we're doing it consistently throughout the district. Because it can be, uh, it can be a swing point that, that will occur and will happen. And I, I'm, you know, our numbers are, are 97%. Uh, so for, for constant, this absenteeism to be, that 18% is just, seems like a strange number. So that's something that we, as a part of this data team, we are looking at that. But this data team is new. It's something that has not been done in a number of years. I'm not sure about the past past. Uh, but it is a group of administrators that are very interested in putting this information together as a district, studying it as a district and prioritizing as a district, uh, budget and otherwise as we move forward. Um, and it is exciting to have Melanie in her position. Uh, Melanie could not be here tonight. She's in Iceland with a group of administrators studying the school system, uh, over in, in Iceland and, and, uh, apparently have a nice time looking at the tweets coming out of, of, of the Icelandic region. Uh, but we, we miss her tonight, but she is a, a very important part of that team. And as I had indicated last year, the, the need for that in the district is certainly here and present and, uh, moving forward. She'll be a big part of the analysis of this data and making sure that we, our schools improve as a result, uh, making this data, like I said at the beginning, meaningful as opposed to just presenting data. Um, and Brian, you mentioned that, making it more meaningful.
I do want to say one thing about the absenteeism that sort of raises a flag for me. I mean, not only are, are sometimes kids sick and they don't belong, but, you know, signing the warrants and seeing the services that are in place. Sometimes kids have socio-emotional issues and shouldn't be at school. In fact, being at school hurts them. Um, and to sort of, I know what pieces we put in place for those kids until they're ready to come back. You know, we have tutors and we have, uh, one-on-ones and everything like that to make sure they're safe to come back. I, I would hate to think you're going to get, uh, hurt by that, but, you know, considering the amount of services that are applied. I do.
And Mr. Chair, the Mass Department of Public Health is saying, if your child's sick, keep your child home.
Right, absolutely.
And, but it all works against us unfortunately.
And it's the coding too. And if there's a student that's out for medical, it, depending if they're hospitalized. So it's, it's coding as, as Mr. Lynch had said as well. And I know, also I had a chance to hear the commissioner speak this summer and he's, he's very, he, as he said, he inherited this system and he's actually looking at the social emotional pieces and how that does factor into the data. So that's a little refreshing that he's at least looking at those, through those lenses of looking at the whole child, just not through ELA math, science, you know, and looking at those other, other pieces as well.
Um, I, I know you haven't gone into the data a lot. Um, but I do want to bring up one thing that you guys had red flagged to us last year. And one of the red flags, I, I think a big red flag was, last year was the first time that students used computers to take the test. And you were going to put into effect, um, some things that would hopefully counter that and the kids would be ready for that. Do you think they've worked, given what you've seen?
I do, and I think the more kids are taking, you know, using the devices for a variety of purposes, the better they're going to do. And I think from my standpoint, some of that is, and I want to go back to your point too, in connection to this, when parents are asking about MCAS. It, you know, when we get these reports, it's a piece of the puzzle. Definitely is not all about what each school is about. You heard Mr. Branding and talking about all the awesome activities at high school. There's a lot more than just MCAS, certainly. But it is an important piece of the picture. And I think the message I hope parents understand, there's a lot to be celebrated in this data. But you also need to look at data trends over time. And if you look at the Middleborough data, it's been trending in the right direction. And I'll just speak for my own school. When I first came here, we legitimately had a problem. It was not okay. We had, in math, we were in the seventh percentile in sped. That's atrocious. That's what we were handing up to the middle school and the high school. That's going to affect their numbers. Our math numbers were in the bottom 20%, we're in the 19th percentile. This year we're in the 60th percentile in math. And our sped kids were in the 43rd percentile. That's just my building. She has celebrations, the middle school has celebrations. I think it's important that parents understand that the data is trending in the right direction. And like with anything else, there's peaks and valleys, there's ups and downs. You can't end up down the rabbit hole worrying too much about any one data point or any one thing. And I think the message we were trying to deliver as it related to computers last year, you know, the targets this year, that, you know, any one thing you see, you can't over-celebrate and you can't over-worry about. We just need to look at trends, we need to figure out where our strengths and weaknesses are and move forward. And that's what our plan is as we move forward.
Mr. Chair. I've been sitting here talking about it and I, I think I asked Ms. Grimes about, um, we were talking about the scratch paper being shredded.
Our writing scores went up.
And, and all of a sudden they went from kids not using scratch paper at all, pretty much just going to the computer, to going to the compu-, using the scratch paper, drawing their, and, and working at it. And that, to me, that wa-, that had nothing to do with anything else going on in the classroom other than making sure that they did that step.
Right.
Which, that, that's the test. Um, it's not what they knew. And, and I think that seeing that and, because I asked that question back in the spring, how'd it look this time? Because I wanted, I ju-, I felt so much better when you said, yeah, they're using it now. So I, I, I'm like, ah, I'm encouraged by the numbers. I've seen the growth, the Berklin growth just keeps going, which is awesome. Um, and I think that you've been unfairly treated a few years ago because you, you inherited something you could never achieve beyond this. Now you are, you're getting up to the, I think it's awesome.
Well, it helped us give a little bit of sense of urgency, so it's, it's fine.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Thank you so much for this. Uh, this is really interesting stuff and I look forward to spending a lot more time with this, this data. And I, I take your point about not getting too excited about anything and not getting too down on anything. But, um, just as a complete newbie to looking at this stuff, I, I wondered if you could talk a little bit about the, on the accountability report. Um, I'm looking at the achievement section and looking at the all students, non-high school grades and just seeing the, the science, science achievement numbers. It looks like we were on the low side for points earned on those.
It was our first year, um, this year was the first, I'm sorry, first year that was computer-based for science. So just like last year when it was first year for ELA and math and we saw the dip with that technology piece. I know they've already been using it, but with a new subject comes some changes with, with science and they hadn't had a lot of experiences using the computers, um, with science. We do have a tech book in place now with, through Discovery Ed. So that's helping, you know, bridge that gap with the technology piece for science. But, yeah, we've identified that and that's why we have those pieces in place for, with Discovery Ed.
I think sci- science for us has been going the wrong direction the last few years, unfortunately. I think in, it, I think it's different building to building. But in my building, it was, you know, we have a lot of new staff and we did not have a curriculum. So I was putting nothing in their hands. We were figure it out, make it up, like that's what we were doing. So we have a curriculum now and we developed curriculum maps over the summer. But I do think it's going to take us a few years to move those numbers because we're only testing kids in fifth grade. So, you know, we're not going to catch the fifth graders all up and get, make sure they have everything they need and fill all those gaps in one year. We're going to do our best. And I do see those numbers moving, but, um, I think science is one of those things that's going to take us a few years because they only test in fifth and then eighth grade. So it's going to take us a little bit of time to start to move those numbers.
Sure. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask a follow-up in regards to the, the, the technology switch from, I'm assuming it was paper to, to computers. Um, do you see the same trend when comparing our numbers to the state that, that they also, that the rest of the state also had an issue with that switch? Or, or is that switch specific to Middleborough?
No, that switch was, it, it, I mean, we, we had to make the switch, um, this coming, is, I think it's this coming year that everybody, or next year, everybody has to make it in the entire state. Not everybody's even required to make the switch yet. So again, that skews the data a little bit because you still do have some districts that are paper-based. So it's not a even playing field yet. But, um, speaking to other districts and, and colleagues in other districts, everyone saw that, that dip when you, when you go to technology, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
My question, please.
Uh, just a couple of points to that, Mr. Oakley. A couple of years ago, we put in technology education at the elementary level. That had not been there in the past. Uh, so students in a six-day cycle attend a technology class and do keyboarding and do paragraphing and do a number of different skills, basically tech skills, which they hadn't had before. So we're getting there in that department. But that's just the past, really, two years and, and a month now. So that, we're coming a long way there. Last year, uh, we put in place a science tech book, discovery tech book. We had not had that in the past, as, as Ms. Grimes had said. So we have some new, uh, newly formed sort of programs and technologies that have been introduced that are going to assist us as we move forward. Because we have to make sure we're not testing children's ability to use technology as opposed to children's ability to read and write. Um, and so we have to get rid of that, that, hopefully that tech, that computer or that technology unit becomes their pencil as opposed to something they're trying to figure out how to move and slide and, and use the keyboard, et cetera, so.
Planting seeds, right? It takes some time for those things to grow. It sounds like those two things that you mentioned are relatively recent. So, so we're probably, like you're saying, we're looking in the next few years to see some, some growth there?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Could you explain a little bit about the achievement percentile? You said you're in the average scaled score. You said there was, like, that's what you're looking at, that's the final number?
Yes, so...
So how is that, what's that, how do you read that?
So the achievement percentile, I'm just going to go to my school, um, and assessment. Um, so the achievement percentile is this average scaled score. So I'm just looking at third grade math, a 506.7. So the way scaled score works is every question kids are assigned in grades three through eight are assigned a number of points based off the complexity of the question. Some of the questions are, you know, I, I'm making this number up, but a really tough question might be 10 and an easier question might be worth five points. And so as they progress through the test, they basically accumulate a number of points. That becomes their scaled score. So what they have tried to do, um, is say that a scaled score in grade three is the same as a scaled score in grade eight. You know, I think that's a little bit debatable, but I appreciate the effort that they've tried to make because I think it's easier for parents to understand when there's consistency like that. Um, so what they then do is they, basically everything is rooted off that scaled score. So they'll say, our average scaled score in third grade math was 506.7. They put that on, on a chart with all the other schools. And they figure out on a scale from zero to 100, where does HBB third grade land in math on that chart? So we're in the 70th percentile, meaning, you know, there's 30% of the schools in Massachusetts in third grade math are achieving higher than us and 69% that are achieving lower than us.
All right, thank you.
Other question? Um, first of all, thank you to all of you. Uh, we appreciate you starting this process and putting together for us. But I also want to thank the community. You know, I think, um, as we've seen, part of this process and part of moving in the right direction has come from the community. We have the Rotary race. We've had the PTA that essentially started the family resource person. Um, and so even, even the other piece too is, you know, from the idea of using choice money to be able to fund some of these. Paul, we put an extra position in science, uh, for that piece out of choice to make sure that we were handling kids in special needs who needed help in that area. Um, so I want to thank the community too for moving in the right direction. I want to thank you guys. You guys have been doing a fabulous job, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, my final, uh, piece of my report this evening is just a, a thank you to the community and a thank you to the school committee um, for 100% attendance at the recent special town meeting. I did note, note that and I thank you all for being there that evening. We were able to get our article through, which wasn't a real big tester, but it was that special education revolving account that we'll have now down and further down the road to use, uh, with joint effort through the selectmen and the school committee. Uh, also wanted to comment on the, the report out on the MHS building, uh, committee that I did because Rob DeRozier was moderator and chair, uh, moderator, so he could not do it. He asked either myself or Mr. Young could do it. And, uh, I just happened to get the information through him and worked with him on that report. So, uh, there were a lot of, uh, there wasn't a lot of input back from the community on that. So, um, hopefully people are fully understanding what's going on with the high school project. Perhaps not, but if they have any questions, they could always either go to the website or, or send an email off to the ROPM. Um, and that website, there's a, there's an email address. Mr. Chair.
Yes. With regards to the, with regards to that revolving account, will we still be able to potentially prepay some of our tuitions? So this could be in addition to that, so we really stabilize things if we had a tough October 1st roll-through?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going to move on to MSBA update. So just so everyone knows, with the high school, we are moving towards 90%. Um, I think we finished that at the end of this month.
On September 27th, we finished 90.
No, 100 coming up, sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the, if you go to the website, the mhsbuildingproject.com, you can see those 90% plans and specs and all that. They're all online right now.
Yep. Um, just before, a, a couple of things I want everyone to know about. Um, we recently got some updates on the arts and, arts wing uh, for what will essentially be the wall that when you walk into the arts wing and it's unbelievable and I can't wait to unveil it to the full committee, uh, next week. But the other piece too is, um, and, and people may not know this, but obviously the auditorium is named after Wayne Karen, as we talked about. Um, that, outside of that auditorium now, in addition to the normal things that we've seen, uh, which has been the picture of Mr. Karen and the picture of the Wayne Karen, uh, ship that bears, bared his name. Um, it'll also carry the bell from that ship. That ship has, it's been decommissioned. Um, and Middleborough owns that bell, so his bell will be outside, uh, that. Um, and so it's, as we go along, we get bits and pieces and do bits and pieces more and so it gets, uh, really more exciting. And I know we're also pre-qualifying vendors. Um, so there's a, I believe right now we have multiples in every, uh, field, which is fantastic because that means better bidding for us. Steven, do you have a question?
I want to comment on what Mr. Lynch said about the town meeting. I, I agree, I, I think the community supports, um, the high school and this provision because of the transparency that, um, the building committee has shown. In fact, I was impressed when I walked into town meeting, right in the entryway was the whole set of plans, all the different plans that we had produced that the, I'm sorry, that the, the committee had produced, the layouts, everything was displayed. And I think all the open meetings you've had and all the public input you've had, I think that cooperation at town meeting is a result of all that, uh, effort that put up front that you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. I know that the latest update I saw had a, a couple of contractors, one being elevators and one being terrazzo floors that might have been single interest. But I believe there were at least six or seven major contractors who were interested in the whole general construction piece, which is the vital piece. That's the most important piece. Um, and to, to have that competition in that area can only help, uh, the project and can only help the, the citizens of Middleborough in terms of trying to keep that number down, um, which would be great. I also wanted to make the point, uh, Mr. Branding and is still here, but that we did receive a letter this week from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which indicated that the alternative spaces that, that were proposed, the change in the visioning for the high school, uh, to include a sort of a cafe uh, run by the special ed department, was approved by the DEES. So that was, uh, approved without question and, and which is great. So that was the latest that I've seen from DEES and I did pass that around to the committee and it was sent to the committee.
And that particular piece came in discussion with other schools. I believe it was Plymouth North, Paul, that actually had it. Plymouth South didn't have it and Plymouth South told us that they wished they had it and so they recommended it to us and we worked it into it. And Paul did a fantastic job with it and made sure it was online, so it's going to be fantastic for the kids. Um, any other questions about, uh, building committee? Seeing that, I'll move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second? Discussion, Mr. Oakley.
Yeah. Um, I was just kind of curious to hear from, from you guys. So I, I was just recently exposed to, um, a fundraiser and I think it sounds great. And, um, it was a PTA fundraiser. I donated some money to it, it sounds like a really good cause. I donated some money to it, sounds like a really good cause, but I was kind of curious to hear from you guys, what type of money the, the PTA raises, what that usually goes to, and how that factors into our, our budgeting.
Our parent teachers associations are very active, especially at the elementary level. They raise a good deal of money, and that money goes directly back to students in one form or the other. If you heard earlier, the gift that was taken from the Henry B. Berklin Parent Teachers Association, buying approximately $5,400 worth of, of backup science equipment, and, and hands-on science equipment for students. So, that money goes back to the students in field trips, and helping with field trips, and helping with a lot of things that go on in the school day-to-day, that at times, the budget can't support or doesn't support. We try to walk that careful line with what the school should be supplying, and what the parents group would like to supply. So, that always becomes a, a conversation at times, with folks who say, "We shouldn't be buying furniture for a school." And at times, when a, a PTA gets to the end of the year and says, "We have some money left, we'd like to do this, we'd like to use those tables whenever we can, but we'll make them available to the school." So, there are times, then, that thin line is, is walked, and, and as, as, having been a building principal for a number of years, it is something you have to watch and be careful with, because there are folks who sit and say, "What, you know, we shouldn't be buying pencils and pens, the school should be providing those, and, and we shouldn't be providing different things." So, but the parents group are generally a supportive, a group that, that raises money to, to send back to students and return back to students. And we still have all five of our principals here, so if anybody, any principal might have a comment, they can certainly welcome to come down, but I think that may summarize it.
I also think that we should mention too, Rich, that they, that PTA, for example, has extended the school year with their summer programs, and so there's additional things. I, I know they pay the instructors, for example, to do the summer program. So, it's allowed our kids opportunities to continue being educated over the summertime. I agree, I think that, you know, included in the PTA, I would also include, in my mind too, MASBA, which is the athletic boosters, and also the hockey parents, because again, these are people raising money for things that, in some respects, we couldn't, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we could afford a hockey program if those parents didn't, weren't able to step up and get ice time and, and do things like that. In the past, we have not been able to afford, we've not, we've, we've constantly been in the black in, in athletics, but that's sort of changed with Mrs. Silver. But, but the same token, MASBA has been buying the pieces with uniforms and everything like that, so that's always been helpful. Yes.
Me just sitting here for the last seven and a half years, the things that I've seen, because I got here right when they did this reorganization of the schools, we had one school with a library, one school without a library, that was creating a library, one of the PTAs really kicked up a lot for helping buy books and, and things like that, extra pieces that, bringing in a speaker, or, or an artist, or a, an author to come in and be in that school and really work, it's an extension. It sounds like a fun thing, but it's fun with an educational piece, that's where they really extend out those pieces, where we might not be able to budget them, or the discretionary of money that the schools have, which is not a lot of discretionary money, they wouldn't have been able to, to do it sometimes. So, the thousands of dolls that they raise, it just goes to all these different, I, as my kids went through it, I just can't think of all these different things that they were doing, and they kept doing it over and over again, and it was just wonderful. I don't think any student ever goes without in our district. When you talk about the pencils and everything, a lot of parents buy their, buy a lot of stuff, but no kid ever goes without, which is good, no kid would ever go without. But I know the, the PTAs have stepped up in that area at times, and done certain things. I recall it vividly, so.
And if I could just add one more to it, because I think it's really important to mention, my wife being a teacher, I don't think teachers, you know, teachers consistently add to their classroom and buy things for their classroom over and over again, that they go over and above, and I think that's important to note too. You know, as like Brian said, when, when a teacher notices a kid doesn't have something, it's usually first and foremost, the teacher that goes out and picks it up for that, for that student, to make sure that they're included.
And, Mr. Chair, two additional points, if I could, and, and I apologize for not mentioning enrichment, because they bring in a lot of enrichment programs throughout the year for students, and, and that's storytellers and magicians, and we try to keep them related to the curriculum, certainly. And also, I just did want to mention, a little shout-out to the Henry B. Berklin School, talking about seeds and growing. They decided a few years back that because of their student population, they really needed a family resource, somebody in family resource, and they donated $7,000 to fund this Family Resource Center, which we were able to match as a district through some creative budgeting, and we matched that as a di- a district, and brought in that person on a part-time basis, which became so successful that we wrote it into the Title I grant the following year, and the federal government and the state liked it so much, that that's become now a model for the state. And our family resource and, and our Title I coordinators present this at conferences every year, this, this idea of the Family Resource Center. And it's just amazing what help that's provided for students and the community on a day-to-day, a month-to-month, and a year-to-year basis, so. There's just a couple, a couple more examples there.
Thank you all very much. That's really interesting. It sounds like we're really lucky with the groups that we have around here, and, and how active they are. It's exciting to hear about all these things.
Very fortunate.
Yeah, thank you.
There is one other point that I should make too, because I think it's important. As you see from our agenda, we approve all donations to the school. And so, you know, we, we have to have oversight in some way, and so, you know, it's those areas in which, when, you know, there are things going on, there are things going on, like during the summertime, that they do on their own, so we're not approving those other than allowing them to have the facilities for the time.
And, Mr. Chair, we received this week a $6,000 scoreboard, brand-new scoreboard for the Henry B. Berklin School, courtesy of the Middleborough Sunday School Basketball Association. They had money they wanted to give back to the school system, and are appreciative of the fact that they've been able to use the gyms for so many years, and have run successful programs. So, that's just a donation that we've talked about before, but it arrived this week, so keeping in mind that, and they're going to, they're going to install it too, so.
Great.
Thank you.
We have a donation for that, and they pay rent.
Right.
So, they're already paying rent, and they still donated, because they were, they were nice enough. I, I think that's awesome.
Yep.
Community.
Yep.
So, there's a motion, and on the table, any further discussion? I'm just happy I remembered that this motion was still there. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Under MASC, just a reminder of the conference, I can take off charting the course since Mr. Oakley attended. We will have, we were, we had planned on the school committee workshop and operating protocols, but there was a problem, so I'll send out new dates to everybody for that. Policy Subcommittee again, under action items, we have to elect a delegate to the 2018 convention.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would move that we elect Rich Young as our delegate to the 2018 convention.
To her a second. Seeing I'm the only one attending the convention, that sort of makes sense. Any other? I do accept. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You all get a packet for the resolutions. It has always been the purview of this committee, to allow the delegate to make decisions at the convention, primarily because there's usually spirited debate. But it is still a decision of the school committee as to do that, and so I open that up. If anyone has any particular piece, then we could bring it up at the next meeting, I gave it time, but, Mr. Givernoni?
I would move that we authorize you to vote the, the 2018 resolutions of convention on behalf of the Middleborough School Committee.
Do I say? Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that you understand how we all feel about a lot of these items, so I have more than enough trust in you.
Thank you. So...
On the table, I'm just kind of curious if you can talk about what type of resolutions are voted on at the conference?
Sure. The, the big issues that I know are currently going on for resolutions, there is a resolution on the table to not allow, to not allow teachers to be armed, even though it's against Massachusetts state law, there's already, obviously been a federal push to arm teachers, and so the committee, the Mass Association of School Communities wishes to take up, that they don't want that particular piece to happen. There's also a funding formula piece, asking for the funding formula to be redone, which is a typical piece, and they usually do that. And there's also some additional resolutions on, on chapter aid to school systems, and allowing it to be more flexible to each individual school system. Those are the ones I remember off the top of my head, to be honest with you. But that's the normal ones. Any committee is allowed to make a resolution, committee has to vote it and send it to MASC. MASC puts every resolution that a committee asks for on the ballot, whether or not they support it or not, is up to the board for MASC. But, it, you know, it's interesting, and there's, I would say there's spirited debate. Brian's been there at times, so there's always a spirited debate at various times over those particular issues, and you'll get both sides talking about it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. The other thing I put on the agenda was in discussion with all of you, and it's a conversation I'm going to have with MASC. Part of the problem that we run into with MASC is that, and MASs, is they run their convention generally Wednesday through Saturday. It makes it difficult for people who work to attend, and we've put a premium on professional development. We put the premium on professional development with our administrators, we put the premium on professional development with our, with our staff. I have, in the past, attended the National School Board Association Conference, and I bring this up only because of two reasons. One, it floats all over the country each year, it is relatively close, and by relatively close, I mean Philadelphia for next year, and secondly, that piece is over a weekend. And so, I wanted, we hadn't budgeted for it, and I did want to put up to the committee to vote, in my mind, to allow members to attend that conference if they so choose. Again, it's an opportunity that is close, and not that far away, and it's also a weekend opportunity. It is a fantastic convention, and they do a fantastic job, yes.
Can we put this on our next meeting?
Sure.
Because I'd love to know, cost-wise, are we trying to make sure?
Sure. No problem, that's why.
It's a great idea, I think it's a great idea, but I just think, cost-wise, it'd be nice to know.
Nope, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yes. Is that weekend a conflict with our groundbreaking? To be honest, well, no, because we haven't 100% set our groundbreaking. Okay. And so, we could move the groundbreaking. It also sort of works out nicely, because it's the weekend prior to elections, so it doesn't interfere with election either. The groundbreaking of the April 1st date was just a date that we put on the calendar that isn't 100%, you know, given the weather and everything like that, but we could, I, I guarantee you, we can move it to another day. Mr. Oakley.
Sorry to talk about something that we, we just voted on, but I was just looking at the, the resolutions for the, for the conference, and I wondered if, if maybe at a meeting between now and the conference, if we could maybe talk a little bit more about those individual resolutions, because it looks like there's some pretty controversial stuff on there.
Sure. Okay, so let's work on this for a minute. So, if no one objects, I'm going to bring it up at next meeting, I'll have the price tag and everything like that. I can also bring up the individual, we would need to vote to change what to do, but we could have a discussion about each individual, and I could hear individual members' thoughts, if that makes sense.
Sure, and I want to be clear, I mean, I'm, I'm, I have full confidence in you as a, as a delegate to this.
No, no problem.
I just, I see some stuff on there that I'd be real curious to hear more about, and what was proposed, or what, you know, I see the full text of the resolutions, but I'd like to talk more about it, if that's okay.
Sure, and just so you know, that, just to be clear, there, you're, what you're probably reading is what I'm probably going to have. So, if you want a specific information, if you could send it to me, because I can look it up and have conversations. But most of that comes out at the conference, and you're not going to get information beforehand other than what you, you all have.
I see.
And sometimes when you go there, so the, if, correct me if I'm wrong, the resolutions are on Saturday, the delegate assembly is on Saturday, I believe. Oh, no, maybe it's Thursday. Yeah, I mean, they moved it, it used to be on Saturday, but anyways, usually it's Wednesday when you arrive, people start handing out information about various pieces, so that's where you start getting the presentation, but we can have those discussions, that's not a problem. I'll make sure they're on the agenda.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
So, that piece about having the convention on the week, more on the weekend, is that something you're going to put forward?
I may have a conversation with MASC. Where it goes, I don't know. I do know the director, executive director, pretty well, and so.
Yeah, from my personal experience, I'd like, I went to the Summer Institute, which I thoroughly enjoyed and thought it was really helpful, and I've wanted to go to this every year I've been here, but, you know, to take three, I get three personal days, and this would burn all of them.
Yep.
So, that's why it would be, I think, a good discussion to maybe see if we make it more of a weekend.
Yep.
Friday through Sunday, or something like that.
Yep.